This conference will now be recorded.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. Item one on the agenda this evening is consent agenda items. I believe we do have a request for...
I'll make a motion to approve one A and B and I'd like to pull C out for later discussion.
What if we put that at four, four B, like right between four and five?
Very little bit.
So we have a motion, a second, a motion by Councilman Mollatt, second from Councilman Schreiber. Will the clerk please call roll?
Mollin?
Yes.
Mollatt?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Yes. Item number two on this evening's agenda is a request or comments from the public. If anyone's going to share with us this evening, just remember you'll have three minutes, starting with your name and your address. And then when you have thirty seconds left, I'll give you a quick signal to wrap it up.
Steve Johnson, 507 High Street. I would love, I'm requesting that you give me a verbal update tonight on the issue with the fire hydrants up on High Street, followed up with an email. That's all.
Thank you. No other comments, we'll move on to item number three, Consider Resolution 2025-03. Resolution authorizing the commencement of condemnation proceedings to acquire certain property to widen and reconstruct Richland Avenue.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor Council, you have for you the item number three background information. This is old business and in a sense that we worked through as much as we could to get offers out and negotiate property acquisition for right of way and easements. We continue that and we continue that yet to this day. Resolution 25-03 specifically indicates the necessity domain. You have to pass the resolution and then we move on to the ordinance. And we recommend that you proceed with passing this particular resolution.
My God, there's three properties, correct? And I think I've looked at the earth and is the north and the south, east end of Richland, 102nd and that?
Yes. Yes.
And they're individual homeowners?
That's correct.
Cannot contact them?
Well, I think, well, we've got to be careful here. One has asked significantly more than the property value for remuneration, so we rejected that. The second one was indicated that they would sign all the documents, but there is some sort of domestic-related issue. Maybe they're not available in some way. I'm not talking about domestic violence, I'm talking about something to do with their family, people who could sign. And so they kind of on radio silence for several, several weeks. In-person attempts, phone calls, emails, we've done it all through the mail. They made, they made pretty significant effort to get paper signed. I can say there was indication that they would, would sign these. And that particular property, there's only a fence in the way and it's only in our construction easement, creating...
Can you say which one is it?
It's to the south.
The south?
Yes.
They've redone all of that.
Yeah. The fence was a particular, only that type of fence. That's okay, we've offered a replacement.
How much are we, property are we talking about? I mean, are we talking like five B, we talking about utilities on the north and south ones? I think you probably see where I'm going. I am not a fan of eminent domain whatsoever. And that's where I'm going with that. I would like to come into other councils. I'd like to try harder or, I mean, I would really like to try harder to get an agreement with those landlords. And the Schenell one just worries me with those other circumstances. That's, that's the question that I want. And then when we get information on that word eminent domain, I would like to see a schematic of exactly what we're talking about. Kind of formulated that in my mind of what I'm looking at. Thank you for the answers, but I've still got this. I do not like that word eminent domain. So, sorry. Thank you.
I have, I have a couple questions. How long has this been going on? How long have the negotiations been going on with the holdouts, I guess, for lack of a better...
Several months.
And how big a area of streets is this, is this holding up to work on?
For nearly the entire property. Since, so that would be very, very hard. Light and road either have some impact or obviously have long-term damage to property. They should incur. So, I would say right now, it's a free variable. All our places start fostering activities. But as far as construction on roads, this is where all the very mainways and potential businesses, the trees are a big utility. Without the trees, we're not going to be able to do this. What happens is companies, it's not simple trees. Companies that are not that, they're oriented, they're increasing, they have to be able to utilize all the stuff that we need. So what is this all? Sorry.
I, I agree with Councilmember Mollatt. Do not like the eminent domain process whatsoever, but kicking the can down the street a few more weeks or another month, what, what is that going to accomplish? I, I'm, I'm asking, what would that accomplish?
I think on advice of a lot of areas, this is a step that we can take.
And you, it would be better for them, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Could we do that one and delay the other two for some more?
May I ask a question that they can, without giving too much information? So the one is holding out for more money. And would that be fair to the other landowners if we gave them more money?
It would not.
So it doesn't sound like there's a, that doesn't sound like there's going to be a...
Consensus?
Correct. It sounds kind of like a better way to go with this property.
Was this on the agenda previously? Didn't we give an amount of time to try to reach out and kind of extend that old branch? And that's been a little while ago. Do you remember about how long you did that? So you've extended from...
Have they, do they live in the residences or they... Were all of the other residents down there in agreement? You've come to agreement with all of them. They've got two or three really nice new houses down there.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2025-03 to a resolution authorizing the commencement of condemnation proceedings to acquire certain property to widen and reconstruct Richland Avenue. With a motion from Councilman Adcox, a second from Councilman Mollin, will the clerk please call on?
Mollin?
Yes.
Mollatt?
No.
Schreiber?
Yes. Yes.
Item number four, Consider Ordinance 1082, an ordinance commencing with condemnation proceedings to acquire certain property to widen and reconstruct Richland Avenue.
Some of the previous discussions we're talking about, we actually institute eminent domain proceedings. And only call your attention to the question of this ordinance. Within the, within item number four background information, it does say in the second paragraph that Resolution number 2025-03 had the March 10th, will have to be directed to March 8th. Circulated out. Essentially, this, this institutes eminent domain proceedings. And you have there listed property tractation five, number six, and number 14, the other discussing.
Yeah, so I make a motion to approve Ordinance 1082 on commencing with condemnation proceedings to acquire certain property to widen and reconstruct Richland Avenue.
I see.
Motion from Councilman Adcox, a second from Councilman Mollin, will the clerk please call on?
Mollin?
Yes.
Mollatt?
No.
Schreiber?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Um, just kind of to button that one up for people who aren't with us the first time. This was something that's been going on for a few months and I think all of us have the same feeling on personal property rights. We want that to be very much respected. This particular street has been failing for quite some time. And in just doing the research behind it, finding that if we weren't taking a large swath of property, we just need to get this done, otherwise that street's going to continue failing. Unfortunately, the goal still is to get into agreement with those property owners before we have to move forward. Thankfully, that's not shut down. We'll be able to continue reaching out and working with them to try to find resolution as soon as possible. Item number five, Governing Body Consider Charter Ordinance 2025-02. A charter ordinance exempting the city from certain statutory provisions related to the establishment, maintenance, and funding of public libraries and providing substitute and additional provisions thereto.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor Council, you have for you item number five, a background charter ordinance covered by both. The mayor essentially preface this since that state statutes are not applicable in all cities. And you can opt out, so we charter out, you're not getting out of state statutes. Therefore, to have home rule, local governance, that's exactly what this does regarding specific to a library. Essentially, this says that it is a 12, 1220 through 12, 1230, are the state statutes. You're opting yourself out of those, not being applied specific to the establishment, maintenance, and funding of the public library. Essentially, one of the biggest factors that we know for the accomplish is that it's a local managed library, the city library department. This doesn't do that, but this gives us an opportunity to help for you to take the next year and establish the city library. And this, this would get... The end goal is we can still do those contracts with entities, with the one as a part of the city, with the corporate part of the library. The library system. And this could be the tax lady, the public library, because it will be part of our general fund letting. So that's essentially what this does, we recommend that you adopt this, so that we can charter, so that we can opt out of state statutes. Get established here on our own municipal library. Then be charged with a tax.
So this is something that we've been working on for quite some time. Uh, there is a lot of strategy behind it, but the, the huge win here is bringing a service to our community that we already paying significantly for, for other communities. And so right now, our Edwardsville residents and businesses are pouring about half a million dollars into Kansas City, Kansas libraries and other Wyandotte County libraries that our people don't have easy access to. And so what the goal is, is to provide a service right here in our city and save tax dollars while doing it. So it's just a hands-down win. This doesn't establish the library, but it's the first step in doing that, which is really exciting to see moving forward.
What, what are we paying in mill to UG right now for library services and that tip?
I don't know.
Four point eight mills?
Five point four one was under that.
I had heard five point eight eight at one time or another. Does this, does this get us out of that five point four mills? Does this ordinance do that? We can option out at our own decision, or does it take the library board to let us option out? How does that work?
I see your question.
But who would make that decision? That we wouldn't have to pay the four point eight mills? That is not made yet. Well, that, that could happen. That's how, one of them is library, it's a tax or citizens. You do, Charles.
And Charles. The woman is created 2025-02. Not all of them are required to be a charter holder. So, they're not going to be... Charter out, statutes, if they're on speed two, right, law enforcement. So that's why having to take, take a special part. I'm sure, I'm sure. Same version, have to do.
I understand that part, but I'm, I'm considering, I don't think that I have ever seen the UG refuse to take a tax from somebody. And I don't know that the UG would ever be acceptable to, hey, we're getting five mills from Edwardsville, why would we quit that? And I'm thinking, if, if that would happen, then we'd, we'd be on the hook for that, plus what we need to increase. Am I not getting this right? I think it's playing cards. Yeah, no, I, I want the library, don't get me wrong.
One benefit too, I'm sorry guys. Yeah, one benefit too of these opt-outs of the state statutes or home rule is making this governing body the library board. In the regular state statute, though, you establish a separate library board, which is a mill-setting entity that is unelected. And so there's no accountability to the residents. And so that board could say, you're going to set two mills, you're going to set 20 mills, and then we would have notes saying limiting that or capting it. And so that's one of the statutes that's included in here that we are opting out of, to say we're not going to have unelected boards forcing mills onto our residents. And so this is just part of the first step in the process of getting this goal of, of home ruling, having services here in our city, but that are also being managed responsibly by elected people who are accountable to our residents.
That's the scary. Well, I do want the constituents to understand, I am in favor of the library. I'm just, I'm leery of unified government telling us anything. Our mayor is pretty good proof of that because she fights and battles down there quite a bit. Thank you for the explanation and the time for that. It helps me because I'm just worried about five mills here and four mills here, overland.
Is there another question with your motion to approve? Make a motion to a job charter ordinance, twenty twenty five oh two, a charter ordinance accepting a city of certain statutory provisions related to the establishment, maintenance, and funding of public libraries and providing substitute and additional provisions.
Second, with a motion from Councilman Shriver, a second from Councilman Adcox, will the clerk please call roll?
Yes. Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Adcox?
Yes. Yes, that's what I was just getting ready for. So this is item one C that we've just bumped down a little bit, and that'll be appointments to the stormwater runoff technical review committee.
Mayor, if you all get some background on it, I sent an message out earlier and responded to this once, but I haven't been able to. Essentially, you're required to have this committee, and there's never been a trigger, even making read that language. And that committee is is made up from the Board of Zilling Appeals. And who makes up that Board of Zilling Appeals is the planning commission. So the members detailed in the background information for a life that is in this particular review committee are members of the planning commission, who are also members of the Board of Zilling Appeals. And therefore, Mayor K R selected names, it's a group of the seven, it's five, and therefore, you have that. Whether we ever use this or not, it should be something in our annual plans. It's one of those little hidden things in some of the code words is that we we just never got one in our history. It exists throughout the country, it's a different one. So we'll just add this as a part of our annual plans. Again, this planning commission, the Board of Zilling Appeals, the Board of Zilling Appeals members, five of them are the members of this technical review committee.
And would the same group be the technical review committee, or should something else arrive, or?
It depends on what, if there is one, and whether or not it tells us who they are and how many. But it's very possible. So this is going to do is review the decisions of the city engineer. If someone is agreed by decision, if they want to extend or amend a requirement, and appeal and say it may vary to the state. Question, some relief from the city engineer's past, or received done.
Well, I think one of my questions that I emailed you this this afternoon was, what kind of qualifications are there for a person to be on the technical review committee?
Be a member of the planning commission.
That's that's it.
Shall be five members of the, seven members.
And they can overthrow a city engineer? I'd like to table that. I've been on the council for a long time, and I've never never heard of this. It never has come up that I know of. I would like to table this, so I could study it a little bit. That's just me.
Is it something that's time sensitive, or would that be okay to table and get some more info?
I don't know that we've. I don't know that we've ever, I don't think we've ever had this before us before, any complaints, is it involving lawsuits or just differences of opinion, or?
So I suppose one is I gotta figure it out. Part of my city engineer. It's important, opinions and suggestions, or some type of order. Not any case, specifically, it just takes a small one. If the engineer has to make a final decision, or if I didn't order, it's not a deal. But in that language, in proper portances, it says specifically, someone who they're not surprised. You know, the council, I've never heard of this, right? They have to have a deal to, so you have to have. So, yeah, it's, this is rare, but we should have this, if it's in our code works, otherwise take that.
So this is to be in compliance with our own ordinance that we've had for some time?
Sometimes it takes these things to trigger, somebody saying, hey, what about this whole day? Kind of just have a panic situation. Is it really not, what I look back at this?
Very rare.
Just to.
Formally make a motion to table this until the next meeting.
And just to clarify, without getting into the weeds too much, we do have a resident that is asking for a process to appeal, or or something, which is why you said this has kind of been brought to our attention, triggered our attention.
Yeah, table until the next, till the next meeting, please.
Basically, it's the appointment of this of this sub-board or the appeals committee.
Right. These five names that say they're gonna be on this board, they're already on the planning commission, they're already on the board of Zilling Appeals.
Right. Right. Right.
Well, I wanna see what the process is too. You've got ordinance, you've got subsections, and all this, I like to look at those and see what they're dealing with.
I'll suck at that motion here, time to review this for next meeting.
Yes.
We have a motion from Councilman Malat, a second from Councilman Shriver, will the clerk please call roll?
Roll it.
Yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes. I think that would be fine if we if we, if you can maybe answer questions or ask questions over email, then that would be.
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause I'll probably, I'll probably review them.
And then just, I think if anyone has questions, just copy the the group and or B C C, and that way we can all make sure we're ready. Item number six, we're gonna have a motion to table until a June meeting. But I do need to make that motion, please.
Make a motion to table item number six.
Second. With a motion from Councilman Shriver, a second from Councilman Adcox, will the clerk please call roll?
Roll it.
Yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes. Item seven, here are presentations by Finkel Williams, Architecture and the Design Progress on Municipal Complex Building in the Fire Station renovation.
Mayor, thank you, well, Helen Ellicott, you're the lead, excellent architect, Finkel Williams, excellent job.
Very good. Good evening, Mayor, council member. Testing, testing, okay. Um, so we've been working very hard with the building committee and our design team and our contracting team um, to progress both the fire station addition and the municipal building that includes the city hall, the police department, and the library that you guys just discussed. So it's exciting to hear that you're moving forward with establishing your own library. Um, we've had a lot of conversations about libraries over the last several months, and very excited for the city to be starting that process. Um, 'cause we've been focusing on, you know, the the public amenities, the community aspect of this project, not just the city services that are provided here, but the the public safety and the community aspect have been kind of hand in hand. Um, so during this process, we always have been going back to our guiding principles. Um, creating a facility that the community will be proud of.
So this is the update to our site, and uh, the office is on the left, you know. Uh, so the the plan is called, we'll share with some others that was quite recent in the past, uh, to leave it at home. We got some kind of, there's some issue on the stairs, there's some problems on the stairs. Uh, the floor's been a little bit shaking now, to uh, sort of, sort of, uh, circulation, uh, the inside and outside, uh, from the public, uh, area. So public entry is, uh, the location by, you know, the, uh, the, uh, one way to the, uh, public, uh, way to, uh, drive, uh, the, uh, 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 uh. The top line area for, uh, the, uh, it's a, uh, main stage area, um, um, uh, side, uh, uh. Uh, the size of the project. Uh, the keep structure on the left portion of the side path. Uh, the, that's supposed to be circulation. Uh, it's just a project that's actually. And then when they get into the installation, uh, it's a particular time.
Thank you so much for being here, we appreciate your time and work. City manager report.
Ninety-eight, eighty-one. Expected to be done by seven thirty. Further delay, we have to do all the needs to be built. Michael Ray on. Was it possible? Some quite deep enough. Right now, due extent. Hope and especially across the city. Now, franchise. Set up more than that. Weeks were swiping. Lot of ratings. Some reconstruction of some five blocks. That was residency. For ten more. They had twenty-four foot five five. But twelve were down. And the best add all. Come in zone. On action. Somebody pulled people there, excavator, and then did a haul. It's hard. It's easy for us, which is hard. The resident. Hard. Made some exceptions. Asked for some chain orders. Doesn't all try nothing. Not pretty much. So, I'm still coming too. Track well, they're spending. Because of policy. We're proud of that. We didn't get a profit. Profit score. So, we won't know that. It's. But something indeed we've done. Something. Lesson part. Guess what we have? This is phase two. We did. We'll check base two. All of them. Wow. Exceptional. Two. Or again. So, I'm sorry, no same base. No sign. Less sign. Idiot response. I mean, we think that does limit some of our framing. Into what is some houses that are very close to the road. So, not much for a yard. We're gonna take as little as possible. Well, we've been approved. Moving wide away. See, they're interrupting the place. That's a nice place. That is the first one. Be considered that. Not, not a comment, but I was going to say, definitely. And I need to hate that. Because we have. Every day will give five hundred thousand dollars. To your services. However, this don't. Is. They have. Had to get rid of. Will be a first of resolution. That some folks will be wrongies. If you deserve us. We should do so. It's happening. So, this is. We can charge the defense service. On late. But. Have chase means you can town center. That could. So, if you. Do I. I will. That. Tomorrow after that. Sidewalk project. Once again. Twenty twenty-six. Minutes. We're gonna have the projects. All coming. Same time. We spent our rate on a long time. He's here to meet. Frustrating. Basically. We have that we have. Well. Standard on the bridge. Just. That's what. Responding to. From now. So it. Say that. That. City gravel. Which has a very long historic easement. Some sort of kind of unique thing. Goes across. Length. Bit wide. The trees are at least a hundred years old. So, standing out there. They have agreed that. There's a couple of options that we have. Yeah, they're doing. Not abandoned gravel. Essentially, the city will have to. And should industry choose to want a gravel spur there. Who will agree that they can have it put back? And that for the life of their kids. What they would have to work with. People agree then that they can have it stored back. So, that's really part of how it is. Next piece may be. My answer. Patients. There may be an option that we have to take the gravel out. Will pay them to. Prime options. They take it out. Then. We just give us their expenses to that. Right now. First, we indicate notice that. You people can evolve. Concerned about. That piece. Years. Paying. A hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Now, if. That's just for committed to that. We're not gonna have to pay it. If the bill's not that high. It's just a suggestion. But. We could either fix the road. Or there may be an option. Have to leave the tracks in place. If it was cut out. Up ends in some way. So, that accommodates the sidewalk. South side. Solid. Definitely. Be. They made. Build whole lane. The tracks. They've given us some options. Take the least evasives. Least expensive route. And people cut off the gravel tracks. That's paid nineteen. Prospects. How like the plan? Others have. Of course. Chartered. So. So, the city. So, that's kind of all these are starting to be. Finish it up. I think we got the basic. Begin. Not on the cut line. Yeah. Ninety-eight, fifty-three. And that's important to talk about. Say why is there's no money. But that will be some attention. We'll be looking at funding in the future. Barely under the cut. However. That. One more year is three more or four more years out from funding. As you can see. Ninety-eight, fifty-two. Started. Funds. Months and months ago. Right. Still, we're not even gonna have to struggle. So. So. It's about the condition that we're in right now. It's. It's more to have. We're already down. So, so, no. We're gonna. We want to down the investment. That'll be tore up. So, like, or maybe not in ten years. She just dug. No, it's all about. Have the money. Or have plenty ourselves. Pay for it ourselves. So. Metal. Matching program. Or funding yourself. That's a. Very good. That look very big. Five. Part. With one. Plus. The rest of. That brings. I think. Quite. Of course. We can build. But. Roads. Attention. Attention. They're trying. There's no choice. There's a question. I think. That's. And last, the big projects. All. Radar. We're. Can charge the engineer. The defense service. And that. Go fund it. I wish. I did. Feel long. Level. Hearing. Or take up. Then. That's. After. If we could show. Professional services. General. And. To date. This year. Looking at that line. What you gotta do is. That's a big, big tick. Time. Addition. So, that's. Part. And it was. This is where we're coming. No, go. Feel long. Months. Enter. Yet. We aren't. Do that. I'm sure. Help. Have a choice.
Would you mind giving an update on the PPU? I know that you've been following up on that already.
After. Well, yeah. For our. Past. Our team. That. I. Corresponded. Compared. To. Manager. And manager. I call the director. But manager of PPU. In. Immediately responded. Immediate touch. To. Director. Water operations. And engineer. And then. Engineer typically assigned. To. So, we met. Corresponded. Had a lot of meeting all together. In that. Truckers look at some solution. They. They were noticed that. They wanted to come. Off. The station. Some sort of. As. Know, by the way. It's very expensive. Here. They can get that. Into their budget. Take it. Sort. Ninety-one. Centimeters. So, our negotiation on that was specific. To what we're gonna do. Which is who repaired the road? Should they have to go? And I would have filled it up with. Probably beyond our basic. And then. We'll call that. Those efforts. Will be placed. On. And then. We work. If we're in construction. Use. Or wider acquisition. Are necessary. Committed. We can take care of that. We can work. On. That's our commitment. Rest of that is replacing. What's on Seventh Street? To the dead end. Will. Which will be. Door. Seven Street. High Street. Seventh Street door. Called Sac Dead End. Has a two inch mark. Has old design. But. Basically, they have several of those. They don't need. All the tampons. And what they have opportunity to replace them. Or if it's a four foot less than one. They'll. They can install. What's on that line? Never. Never meant to be a fire hydrant. Because. Should they look up to it? It's sucking rock. And so, if you built it. So, it's never. Never intended to be a fire hydrant. That. So, as we discussed that. It is kind of like. General. Treatments. Um. Had to talk about. Fourth Street. K dot. K dot. Why that's important is infrastructure. Water infrastructure there. PPU. And they've had several breaks along Fourth Street. On K dot. They have. They have a great partner. They live. And so, they wanted to place that. So, I mentioned. So, that we should all be in touch with K dot. Anyway. There to confirm. And let's plan this entire line replacement. At that time. And as you understand right now. February twenty twenty-seven. On the K dot. Construction project. So, we're. And then they will place all of those lines. They'll abandon the line. Which is, I believe, is. Fifth Street. By the. Business. That's up all the time. There's a very. Dragged line. There. They'll abandon that and replace all the infrastructure. All the way up High Street. All the way up Seventh Street. And again, that last word. It's probably. We started that. They'll dispel hybrids. At. In NPA standards. Well, but that again, I mentioned. Twenty twenty-seven. Well, that doesn't really do us any good. Service today. And I said, well, what can you do to that? We gotta have something. He said, oh, by the way. We're already involved in the process of replacing and updating certain fire hydrants. We'll look on. And part of that. Fourth Street and High Street. On the High Street side. Door. Right now. But they're gonna look at that engineering. They need sound. From over. But they're gonna put it. That gets us a lot more pressure. For fun though. Even though it's a little wave on. It'll be a pump jump. If necessary. Um. So, capacity. Fire hydrant. Will increase. With water readily available. There's smaller hydrants. Less pressure. That's. Think that's four. Eight thirty. So. It. That. That's an immediate solution that they'll have done by this time. So, I thought that was a reasonable approach by them. They would do. Work. They would do it over. And. So. Our, our best bet is if we're getting. Full line of list. Twenty twenty-seven. For K dot. Fourth Street. K dot. Project. Project. We didn't. We don't have. Way. We're going to our portion. And if the fire hydrant. Is gonna come. Quick solution.
Thanks for the update. Councilman Mullin?
Uh. I'd like to thank. Pinkle Williams. And then something to keep on your radar is that never. Hundred fifty. Centimeters. Or. We're here. In Rose. Yes. They still not repaired. The map. And. It's. Probably on. The. I kind of mentioned. Hey. Watching. And everything has been on. So. We'll do after. Ronnie just. It's okay. At their concert. I've had a lot of citizens. Yeah. And then another thing to kind of keep on your radar. A lot of citizens have approached me about. Like, Gary. You can do that. Or just. Give honor. So. Just kind of keep that on your radar. I don't need answers right now. That's it.
There you go. Councilman Mullin?
Um. Yeah, I got a couple things. Cemetery sign is up. The complaint part is why is it there? Why? It should be back around the gazebo somewhere. You have to stop there to read it. At the entrance. And if there's somebody trying to come in. You're. You're gonna be standing there reading that sign. You know what I'm saying? It's a tough sign. Yeah. But I think the, the sign's great. But I think it needs to be repositioned, maybe. Around the gazebo. You know, where you can go up to it. Stand there. Again. I'm sorry. That's. I have a complaint all the time. I like. Phaser ratings? Is there anything new on phaser ratings?
It's really not. It. It's. Data. On the outside. Load. There's. GIS. I expect. Their timeline. Traffic. Is. Always. That one. I. That. We have. That. Suggestion. Start. Best. Data. We don't have access to data. We have to have. We have to be able to. Get. Any derivative. So, that's their job. So.
I just ask that because I think Wood End and Ninety-eight Street. South of the railroad tracks. Needs some attention pretty quick. We're gonna lose them. And that's gonna cost a lot of money. If you drive that, it's like driving on a washboard. That's just, I wanted to throw that out at you. So. Um. Cemetery. Is there any way that we as council members can get some reports on COVID activities?
Yes. Sure. Give. Actual package. Last. We should get an update. On every. Activity. That was. Okay.
Cause that, there's some areas that need some serious attention, I think.
Appreciate those rights. And your response. Right?
I will. I will do that. Because there's some. Some people are complaining about things. The next thing, and I don't want this to be any kind of a dissertation or anything, but. This K dot closing the highway is really got me concerned. At the Midwest Street. I know there's engineers that are looking at that to see, you know, for the convenience of our residents, which is gonna be a definite inconvenience for traffic. Going through Edred's. All any businesses we've got in Edred'sville. But when we put. When we put the culverts in previously, which was probably twenty years ago. We didn't close that highway entirely for that. Traffic kept coming. That was before you were here. Traffic continued on that. They worked around having to close. A state highway for eighteen months through the center of a town. And I think that we need to kind of work with them to not let them close that highway. I don't see any kind of an advantage for Edred or July. See a disadvantage to close that road. And I think that the engineers should get their heads together and try and figure out a better way of doing that. Without putting this on our citizens. Because, I mean, it's gonna be a nightmare when they do that. That's just something I wanted to throw out. And I think that we really need to consider. Complaining to K dot on that. However you do that with state representatives or the governor or whoever. I mean, we want. We want the work done, but why would they wanna close our town down for eighteen months to do that? And if I'm not making any sense, go ahead and reprimand me for it. But.
I'm the messenger.
Yeah. I live. I've grown up here and, you know, I've never had that highway closed. And I just think that's wrong for them to do that. Anyway, that's my two bits worth on that. Uh, and the other thing is, I wanted to say that I've gotten. I know I say this over and over. Got a lot of complaint or compliments on the condition of the park. And the improvements that are being made down there with the sidewalks. And the moving, you know, the moving the route in and putting the green spaces. I think that's coming along real well. I hope you're having good luck with that. Hope you can put that new little machine to really good use down there. So, thank you for that. And that's all. Thank you.
Councilman Trevor?
I would like to thank. Pinkle Williams too for your presentation. It's exciting seeing. What could possibly be our new building. It's very exciting. So, thank you for your presentation. Um. You answered a couple of my things. I did have a question. Random question on the bills last month. I saw a payment to complete heating and cooling. Company. Um. I thought we had a local heating and cooling company. Windat County.